Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. The Committee on General Government Operations, Appropriation Housing now convenes its public hearing. Public hearing notices were given to the media on Monday, March 12th, second notice on March 14th, Thursday, and today is March 19th, Tuesday, and it is now nine o'clock. Oral reading, the public hearing will be on the appointee Alice Tyron, position President of Guam Housing Corporation, term to serve at the pleasure of the governor. And also on Bill 11 dash 35, LS as introduced by Senator Jim James Moylan, an act to create the Expect More Act of 2019 by adding section 3133 to chapter three, title five, Guam Code annotated, relative to the creation of an agency customer service policy. I'd like to recognize and acknowledge the senator that joined me this morning, Senator Jim Moylan. To my right would be Senator Therese Terlay and Senator Taylor Tidaway. General rules for over for this hearing. Those testifying will be recognized in the order of sign up on the sign in sheet. Written testimony may be read lengthy. Written testimonies should be summarized to about five minutes. Written testimonies shall be submitted to the committee. Please provide our legislative staff with your written testimony for photocopying. Testimonies shall be confined to the substance. Persons, individuals will be allowed to present oral testimony only once. Once you are done, you may be asked to remain in the room for questions or for additional testimony as may be desired by the members of the panel. Proper form and decorum shall be practiced by all present in the public hearing room for the proceedings. Individuals who fail to maintain proper form and decorum may be or will be restricted from providing oral testimony and/or maybe and will be asked to leave or be escorted from the room. When you speak, please make sure that the microphone is on and that you speak into the microphone. You state your name for the record. We will begin with the nomination of Ms. Alice Tyron and folks that have signed up. I have Sergeant Major Joseph Moffness. Will you be speaking orally? Please come forward, sir. I have Ms. Tyron. We have Cecilia Matanona. Ceci, no, are you, will you be testifying? No, just okay, in support. And we have Mr. Winkin Perez, sir. I just saw him a second. Okay, well, we have the two of you. Mr. Moffness, we'll start with, before we start with you, I'd like to also recognize Senator Luis Munia who's joined us. We will begin with Mr. Moffness and then with the nominee, ma'am. Okay, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good morning, everyone. Good morning, Mr. Chair and senators of the 35th Guam Legislature. First of all, I'd like to say this, today is an historical event too because as you all know, today is the feast of San Jose and it is only feeding that Ms. Tyron has her confirmation hearing this morning as the feast of San Jose. And you know that, Mr. Senator Joe. I'm here this morning. My name is Joseph Moffness. I'm here, I have no written testimony, but I'm here on behalf of myself to support Mrs. Alice Tyron to be the next president of the Guam Housing Corporation. I've known Mrs. Tyron for a period of, you know, years and with her education and background, I'm pretty sure that she can carry the legwork as the president of the Guam Housing Corporation. Mrs. Tyron is a hardworking individual. She makes things happen. Nothing is hard for her. She's a dual individual. And I've worked with her and I've been with her as one of the member of the Guam Election Commission. And this individual is really a hardworking individual. She will make things happen, no matter what the task is, no matter how hard it is. She is an individual that that will make things happen. And I fully support her as the president of the Guam Housing Corporation. I'd just like to say on behalf of myself, I'd like to thank the committee here for giving me this opportunity in reference to supporting Ms. Alice Tyron as the next president of the Guam Housing. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. I would ask Mr. Perez and Mr. Flores and Mr. Seville, sir. Alice, we're gonna have them testify because they're here to support you, so may God bless you to Alice and your endeavors. And we'll begin with Mr. Perez, sir.
Thank you, Mrs. Chairman. I'm a little bit concerned that there's four of us from the election commission here and it, that constitutes a quorum. Chairman Joseph Augustine, Honorable Senators of Imina Trentai, Cinco, Nali, Histo, Turan, Gohan. I come before you today to support the confirmation of Ms. Alice Tyron as the president of the Guam Housing Corporation. A few weeks ago, I testified in support of the confirmation of Ms. Linda Umpinko DeNorsi for Director of Public Health, noting that testimony, that testimony was the very first time I ever testified on any confirmation. I'm hoping that this will be the last one. I supported Mrs. DeNorsi's appointment because I've known her for more than 25 years. I knew of her work and qualifications and I know of her service to Guam's public health infrastructure. In much the same way, I know of Ms. Tyron's work and her work ethics. I know of her work on behalf of Guam residents seeking help from Dr. Robert Underwood during his tenure as Guam's delegate to the House of Representatives. The constituent cases Alice worked on served as outstanding examples of how federal constituent cases should be handled. My first lessons in constituent casework dealing with federal agencies was reviewing the work performed by Mrs. Tyron and her associates. In this regard, I am confident that she will use the same diligence and insightfulness to accomplish her responsibilities as the president of the Guam Housing Corporation. I fully anticipate that she will address all cases coming before her with the same diligence, but most of all with the same humanity and understanding she gave to constituents needing help in their dealings with the federal bureaucracy. I have worked with Ms. Tyron on the Guam Election Commission for four years, with the last year being under her chairmanship. I can tell this committee that Alice has chaired the commission most effectively and efficiently. When compared with other chairmanships, even my own, I do not hesitate to say that hands down, Alice has been the most effective and most efficient. Election Commission agendas normally exceed 30 pages. In handling these agendas under Alice's leadership, commission meetings rarely exceed an hour in length and we cover everything. She has been fair and even-handed in all matters before the commission. Maintaining that balance can be testy. When dealing with three Democrats and three Republicans, some move are very agoguet. And she has been fair, reasonable, and impartial with some vocal political activists and self-anointed experts in election laws and procedures. In conducting the business of the commission, I think my fellow commissioners will agree that Alice's priorities have been, one, the protection of individual rights to vote; two, the protection of the sanctity and inviability of the individual vote and voting booth; and three, unwavering adherence to the spirit and word of all laws governing the conduct of elections, campaigning, and campaign finance. I have no doubt that Alice will adhere to the same principles and spirit in her management and governance of the Guam Housing Corporation. Thank you for permitting me this time to express my support for this young lady, who I have worked with, whose demeanor I have observed even during contentious moments, and who though she is very soft-spoken, has no hesitation to stand her ground when she knows she is right. Guam Housing Corporation and its clientele will benefit greatly from her experience and her demeanor. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Perez. And you're right, you almost have everybody from the election commission gotten Miss Panglin in here now, so. Maybe we should discuss the other bills for the election commission, but Mr. Seville, sir.
Mr. Chairman, thank you, and members of the committee. Oh, I have to, okay. Mr. Chairman, members of the committee, thank you. I'm very proud to be here, honored to have the opportunity to provide testimony in support of Alice Taharon's nomination for position of president of the Guam Housing Corporation. I think she's an excellent choice for this important position. I've known her throughout our service together on the Guam Election Commission on which I've been the independent member since 2011. Alice is currently serving what I thought was her second term, but I learned this morning may actually be more than her second term as chairman of the election commission. She is an excellent leader. As you can well imagine by the very nature of our work, the commission must address many highly partisan issues, often on very tight deadlines and under the glare of intense public scrutiny. The fact that the commission is frequently able to resolve these issues by unanimous vote is a testament to Alice's good leadership. Without ever compromising her position as a representative of the Democratic Party on the commission, Alice urges her fellow commissioners to always bear in mind our duty to promote and protect the voting rights of our citizens, to ensure fair elections, and to provide prompt and accurate tabulation of election results. As chairman of the election commission, Alice bears responsibility for the operation of an organization which must produce accurate work product while adhering to a complex set of laws and regulations, probably not unlike what she will face with the Guam Housing Corporation. She possesses good attention to detail and is an effective, even-handed supervisor. She knows how to compromise when compromise is appropriate and how to stand firm when compromise is not appropriate. Above all, I believe she is absolutely trustworthy. Her integrity is beyond question. I submit to you that her skills and values are going to prove highly beneficial in her role as president of Guam Housing Corporation, and I have no doubt that she will apply the same dedication and energy to ensuring that the Guam Housing Corporation fulfills its mission of, and this is from their website, providing mortgage financing for first-time homeowners in the low to moderate income range, borrowers who may otherwise not be able to obtain financing, that she devotes to promoting fair and accurate elections and protecting the voters of Guam. Without hesitation, I fully recommend approval of Ms. Taharon's nomination to the position of president of the Guam Housing Corporation.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. Flores.
Good morning, senators. My name is Tom Flores. I am currently the vice chair of the Guam Housing Corporation GHC Board, and I've been a board member since 2011. I am, I'm here to, in support of Alice Tyron for the president of GHC. I am proud to be part of this board. You know, we, I'm working with this staff here. It should, the way we look at it, our conception of this is, is an incub, is a, it's a period of incubation to homeownership, bringing our citizens here, our residents, from possibly homeless or from emergency shelter to maybe a low-cost rental and then on to homeownership, which of course everyone here, I'm sure everyone here owns, up here owns the, owns a home at least, one home. And that brings great pride and self-esteem to you. And in turn, I think that will, that will provide for them to be contributors to society, positive contributors. And that's part of our goal, that's part of our mandate. The ultimate goal, like I said, is to provide a sense of pride and self-esteem to the new homeowner and in turn to help them become productive contributing members to our society, which I think that's what everybody's goal here is. I've known Mrs. Tyron for a short time. Excuse me. But I, you know, I, I was forwarded a copy of her application and I was impressed by it. I mean, she's got a lot of years of service in the government, including working for a few senators, a congressman, and she has some experience in supervise, she held a supervisory position in her last job. I think she'll be an asset to our managerial team. She has shown also a great respect for the board since I first met with her, since we first had our meeting. And she comes across as being very proactive, very proactive. Intelligent young person, or I'm not sure that young, but she, you know, she comes across as very intelligent. And I just, you know, you, as a board member, you just get a vibe for certain people you work for or you work with. And through, since 2011, I've went through, this will be our third president. And so I've tried a little bit of everything. We've had our ups and downs, we've, you know, we've, as a board, we go forth and we mention that we are not, we don't micromanage, but we do allow you to do your work with the resources that we provide to you and the policies that we approve. One thing that kind of impressed me is immediately she took the reins and conducted an onsite inspection of all our assets, Guam housing assets, GHC assets. And on our first board meeting, she developed a comprehensive managerial report that specifically highlights the progress and updates on what the board concerns were, even if it was only her first meeting. That was impressive. On January 25th of this year, the board voted unanimously on resolution 01 dash 2019 to appoint Ms. Tyron as the GHC president, subject to legislative confirmation and approval. And with that, I would like to say again, I am here to, in my support for Ms. Alice Tyron for Guam Housing Corporation president. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Panglin.
Half a day, Mr. Chairman. Sizouas Massey for the opportunity to appear before this committee to support the nomination of our chairperson, Alice Tyron, for president of Guam Housing Corporation. Chairperson Alice has been a major part of my career at the Guam Election Commission. She was the vice chair when I was hired as executive director in 2011. The cohesiveness, effectiveness, and efficiency of the board has largely to do with chairperson's Alice's decision-making skills, reviewing all available information, consulting with board members and legal counsel to uphold every person's fundamental right to vote through fair and honest elections. Throughout my eight years at GEC, I have been a part of a forward-moving organization that continues to promote best practices and especially professional development. Under her leadership as chair or vice chair, she's held those positions pretty often, the GEC has attended conferences on elections, campaign finance, and cybersecurity. By August of 2019, two GEC employees will be nationally certified in elections, registration, and administration. Seminars and workshops are now a staple at the Guam Election Commission. Candidate seminars, precinct official training, volunteer voter registrars are held more frequently at the nudging of chairperson Alice. Of course, she has attended all these best total quality improvement strategy. Open, honest discussions, questions and answers always lead to sound progressive decisions. This is a trademark of chairperson Alice Tyron. I am confident that Guam Housing Corporation stakeholders, all the stakeholders, will benefit from her leadership. Sizouas Massey.
Thank you, Ms. Panglin. Mr. Chairman, Mr. Floris.
Thank you, Senator Sinagustine, members of this Committee on General Government Operations. Brenish and Hoffaday, good morning. I'm here to testify in favor of Ms. Alice Tyron. And if I may, please read my testimony. Thank you for allowing this opportunity to express my support in the confirmation of Ms. Alice Tyron as the next president of the Guam Housing Corporation. As chairman of the Guam Housing Corporation Board of Directors for many years, I can attest to GHC's numerous strides in overcoming the many obstacles and providing much-needed services to the people of Guam. From our first-time homeowners loans and grants to programs that provide safe, sanitary, and affordable homes, our mission comes with many challenges, both now and in the future. With Ms. Tyron's recent transition into our agency, I personally have observed positive influence in her ability to motivate Guam Housing Corporation's employees in productive With a task to provide much-needed revenue to accomplish our mission, Ms. Tyron has provided a vision and a plan for this agency to progress and excel in providing the services and the necessary funding in an economic time of fiscal responsibility and accountability. What I find most attractive about her frame of thinking is her unique belief and approach that every employee is a valuable team member, and this is a true testament of greater advances we can expect from the Guam Housing Corporation under her leadership. With a proven background in financial management, Ms. Tyron has brought these principles and proficiencies forward and have applied them to Guam housing policies and procedures and rendering overall operation and finances to be a more efficient and revenue-conscious. GHC is moving forward with Ms. Tyron. Her commitment to this agency is without question. More importantly, her commitment to the people of Guam unwavering and resolute. I, as chairman of Guam Housing, fully endorse the appointment of Ms. Alice Tyron as president of the Guam Housing Corporation and look forward to the, to working with her in the years to come. Sincerely, Frank A. Floris, Chairman of the Board, Guam Housing Corporation.
Thank you, Frank. We also have listed here before you, Alice, is Jerry Kusostam. We have a written.
Sir, he's just submitting the written testimony.
Okay, no problem. We take this with great, with great hope for Alice. Alice, you're up. Right before you start, I'd like to also recognize Senator Kelly Marsh that's joined us today. Ma'am.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, everyone, for coming to, to support me. I really appreciate it. I'm very humbled and honored. Thank you. Excuse me. Good morning, Honorable Chairman. Oh, wait a second. Can't see. Good morning, Honorable Chairman Joe S. Sinagustine and distinguished members of this august body. Please allow me a moment to thank our oversight chairman for holding this confirmation hearing on my appointment to the Guam Housing Corporation as its first woman president. Thank you, Mr. Chair, for your continued support of my leadership and of this very important agency. I would also be remiss if I did not take this time to thank our MAGA haga, the Honorable Lordess Eli Youngaro, and our Segundu Namaga Lahi, the Honorable Joshua F. Tenorio, for their faith and trust in me to lead the Guam Housing Corporation. I must also take this time to recognize and thank our Guam Housing Corporation Board of Directors, our chairman, Mr. Frank Floris, our vice chairman, Mr. Tomas Flores, Director Sandra Bordalio, Director Cecilia C. Perez, and Director Cecilia G. Matanona for their confidence in me to sit as acting president to help move Guam Housing Corporation forward. And I also need to take this time to thank my mother, Maria Moffness Tyron, for her love and support, and my father, Elias Liangaro Tyron, who is now deceased but always watching from heaven, for being my north star. Hoffaday Zenmananas Sizouas. My name is Alice Tyron, and I am here before you to provide testimony in support of my appointment and to respectfully ask for your vote of confidence to confirm me as the president of Guam Housing Corporation. I believe I am well-suited for this position, given my experience and training in the private sector, the government of Guam, and the federal government, specifically in the House of Representatives. Excuse me. I hold a master's degree in organizational management and a bachelor's degree in political science. I also obtained licenses from the Financial Industry Regulatory Authority, also known as FINRA, and I hold our Guam securities and insurance licenses. Prior to being asked by our MAGA haga to fill the president's position, I worked in the private sector for 12 years. I was the director for Empower Retirement, which is the third-party administrator for the government of Guam's defined contribution retirement system 401A plan and the government's traditional Anne Roth 457 deferred compensation plans. I spent eight years as the director for Empower and four years as a retirement counselor. As a director, I spent a good amount of time working with the retirement fund director and the retirement fund board of trustees. I proffered ideas to assist the fund with ways to address retirement issues and concerns for employees and the trustees alike, and I assisted the trustees with projects and inquiries regarding retirement plans, laws, rules, regulations, and how to best address the needs of, the retirement needs for our government employees. As a retirement counselor, my time was spent most with government employees conducting education seminars and/or individual meetings on budgeting, saving, and investment education. My experience in the Guam Legislature and the U.S. House of Representatives has also helped to prepare me for this position. In both honorable bodies of government, my time was allocated to researching and writing policy, navigating legislative and congressional halls to get members to support legislation and/or ideas for administrative fixes to rules and regulations and addressing constituent concerns. Excuse me. My experience in the financial industry and in policy has placed me in the position to be able to best address the challenges that Guam Housing Corp faces. Guam Housing Corporation's mission is to create and preserve sustainable communities through innovative financing and development by promoting investment in affordable programs for our community. Its mandate is to help individuals to secure mortgage financing who cannot otherwise qualify as borrowers through conventional means. It is also authorized to engage in housing activities, including development of residential subdivisions and construction of housing for rental or resale. At the inception of my appointment by the Board of Directors, I reviewed the transition report as well as the financial statements of GHC and note the following issues impacting the financial position of the corporation. GHC was mandated to fund the first-time homeowners assistance program with $500,000 of its operating funds. This mandate was somewhat contrary to subsection 4111A of chapter four, title 12, requiring GHC to fund revenue generating activities. GHC currently awaits reimbursement of its $500,000 for its operating funds. The first-time homeowners assistance program was administered by GHC from June 2012 to December 15, 2016, without any administrative fees collected by GHC. GHC has also paid for audit each year and has incurred costs relative to the administration of this, this FTHAT program. Because of our low prevailing rates, because of low prevailing rates, GHC reduced its mortgage lending rates resulting in a lower interest-weighted average. The weighted average interest rate decreased from 8.6 20 years ago to its current average of 5.192%. This translates to decrease in interest income each month. Now, this is important because GHC is not, does not receive funding from the legislature. It runs solely on the operations and anything made from interest earned. GHC continues to show a decrease in its portfolio due to the lower interest rates available for current borrowers to seek refinancing at a much lower rate. GHC must work to increase its portfolio to realize higher receivables. Its primary source of lending capital is from the principal payments made by its borrowers. It must continue its efforts to obtain lending capital at the cheapest cost possible and at a longer term. Obtaining a loan for this purpose has been proven not to be the best option for lending capital. Previous leadership requested GHC to address the homeless issue even at the expense of using its operating funds. It has cost GHC a total of $223,726.92 from 2015 to date. This amount includes the loss of rental income, utility expenses, and cleanup expenses as well. Its inventory of rental units, units is in dire need of necessary repair. These units are over 50 years old and must be brought to standard to realize optimal rental rates. Vacancy rates are currently at 24%, a decrease of about 1% from our previous month, which was 25. GHC is mandated to pay for its retirees' COLA supplemental and government share of the medical coverage. The retirees' expenses continue to increase. In FY 2019, it was at $164,839 to $227,484 for FY 2019. The concern is that many of these retirees spend most of their government service at another agency and only a few years at GHC. This becomes a costly financial burden and a potential detriment to the GHC's ability to provide the services it is mandated to make available. A review of personnel rules and laws may be warranted toward financial equity. And if any of the, the senators... And if any of the senators are interested, I can speak to that just a little more if there's any questions. In terms of providing mortgage financing as we are mandated, GHC has the following programs available for first-time homebuyers. We have the Direct Loan. Revenue is generated through the GHC operations. This is... the interest rate is two points above the prevailing rate. Revolving Loan Fund. We have a four-point... we call it a 6% mortgage loan, and that depends on the prevailing rate. We have the Community Affordable Housing Act Trust, CAHUT. So this is an interest-free second mortgage. And then we have the First-Time Homeowners Assistance Program, also known as FTHAP. And this funding from this comes from its cheated funds. And this is a grant program. It's basically free money to eligible individuals, eligible families for first-time homeownership. With GHC's financial position and the many challenges it faces, our GHC team has established its goals to meet its mandate. We look to obtain lending capital at the cheapest cost possible. We are going to increase the inventory of affordable homes. Homes are not readily available for purchase at an affordable price, given today's market. It is a seller's market, and with that in mind, home prices are exceeding $250,000, which exceeds the affordability amount for GHC's prospective applicants. GHC will pursue its plan to showcase affordable alternative building systems that are building code-compliant and insurable. We look to identify a consistent funding source for the First-Time Homeowners Assistance Program. This program provides a grant to assist first-time homeowners with their closing cost or down payment needs. There's no payback required for this grant program. Obtain funds to renovate, rehabilitate its rental units, and to build additional units to meet demands of affordable rental and housing. We initiate the passage of legislation addressing permanent funding for the Housing Trust Fund and to update the Mortgage Credit Certificate Program with the guidance of revenue and taxation. In closing, I have outlined GHC's challenges, its goals, and potential solutions, my background and my experience to best lead this agency, that would best lead this agency. And if it is in the wisdom of these esteemed members of this body to vote in favor of my confirmation, I am committed to the work, our team, and the people of Guam to make homeownership a reality for our families in need. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Tyren.
Short and sweet, Mr. Chair.
It was great. I liked the last part. The last part is really what I enjoyed. The wisdom. You got my support, Alice. You won't have to worry about that. I told you that when we first met, and you told me that you'd be nominated. And just looking at all the testimony from all the folks here, the gentlemen and Ms. Panglin, maybe you'll find another house for yourself for Guam Housing and the Election Commission. Get out of rental. But I'd like to also recognize Senator Lee has joined us today. And I'll start with... I'm surrounded by women. Thank God. Down there, they're surrounded by men. Don't move, Frank. You're doing fine. I'll start with Senator Kelly Marsh.
Hoffadee Zenmananas Cezuas. Yes, it is a good experience, I think, to have this strength up here. I just want to add my comments to Senator Joe S. Augustine's that it's very good to hear the support from a very esteemed group of people who have known you for many years or have worked with you in this particular role since you've been there. That is very important to hear. And your testimony is very... it's very detailed, and it shows your experience coming into play and your intense focused interest. And so, no pun intended on the word "interest" there. But so, it's... overall, it's just very good to see all of that coming together. And thank you for accepting the nomination and putting the hard work in that you've already done and already focusing in on goals for the agency and seeing where you can make real differences and move it forward. Cezuas Massey.
Thank you.
Senator Jim, I'm going to skip you. I'm going to go down to Senator Lee. Because we're the only two here, two men, so... Senator Lee.
Buenas, Cezuas Massey, Mr. Chair. And Alice, I want to say thank you so much to you in advance just for accepting the governor's nomination and for the work that you've already done for our community over the years. And, you know, I really look forward to seeing you in this role. I think that you will bring some fresh set of eyes to the Guam Housing Corporation. But also, you know, given your previous financial background, I think you'll be able to help bring that to the table as well. I wanted to ask you a few questions. One of them is if you have made, in your short time there, any efforts to increase energy efficiency and to drive down maintenance costs and to really think sustainably and with kind of an environmentally-friendly hat on how we can kind of turn around some of these rental units and how we can just better operate GHC.
Thank you, Senator Lee. Thank you for that question. We're actually working with the Guam Energy Office to weatherize, take advantage of the current WAP program, the weatherization program that they have there, and weatherize our current homes that haven't been weatherized just yet. So that's one of the ways that we're looking at. We're looking at, when needing to purchase equipment, we're looking for energy-efficient equipment. That's already been... it's not a directive, but at our... with... during team meetings, that's been brought up already to help towards that. It's... that's where we are.
Thank you very much. I also wanted to give you an opportunity. You mentioned in your testimony about reinitiating the passage of legislation addressing permanent funding for the Housing Trust Fund. So I just wanted to give you an opportunity to talk to the committee a little bit about that.
So my understanding with the Housing Trust Fund is that it passed a legislative muster last term and was vetoed by the governor. With the Housing Trust Fund, we need a consistent source of funding into that once, should it be created, so that we would use that, the funding from that, from the Housing Trust Fund to fund programs like the homeless without detriment to Guam Housing's financials at this point. I believe we're looking for a percentage that would come from conveyance fees for homes that were sold for $1 million or more. Or some... I'm sorry, I forget the details. It was $1 million or more or $700,000 or more. And so that conveyance fee would be one of the... would be a way or consistent funding source for the Housing Trust Fund. I don't know if that kind of answered your question.
Yes, it does. Thank you. Just two more questions, Mr. Chair. So your predecessors championed everything from the use of a cheated funds to an increase in certain transfer fees to increase a loan portfolio operated by the Guam Housing Corporation. I wanted to ask you your stance on what's been previously done and what, if any, ways have you considered to increase GHC's liquidity or loan portfolio?
So with regard to funding for certain programs, most especially these cheated funds. Cheated funds are transmitted to the Guam Housing Corp from the Department of Administration. In previous... and those funds are used to fund the FTHAP program, First-Time Homeowners Assistance Program. For background information, the... this program, it's grant money given to qualified individuals to use for closing costs, fees, or anything associated with mortgage loans. It goes... it's 4%... 4% of the total cost of a home to include closing and fees, up to $10,000, not to exceed $10,000. Funding for that comes from these cheated funds. Our experience in previous years is that these funds come in nominally. I believe it has to do with cash flow issues. That's something that I would not like to see removed. However, we do need to identify a much more consistent source of income to be able to fund this type of program. It's a very important program. And I just also want to proffer, and this came with a discussion with my colleague, our housing manager, Angie Camacho, is this is basically free money to families who need to... who are going to purchase a home. What about instituting a pay-it-forward-type program with the FTHAP? Once an individual or a family has settled into their mortgage payments three, five years, they start paying back at 1%. You know, we can work out the details. So that then that comes... that becomes funding for new families who need this grant. And in the event that there's no more as cheated funds, I don't know how long that would last, right? So that's one program. I applaud you, Senator. What was the other question? More funding?
Just increasing GHC liquidity and kind of the overall loan portfolio.
Okay. So we're looking to... borrowing is not something that we want to get into. We are very... speaking with our team, our management team, we're leery... because we've been approached, put out a bond, take out a loan. We do not want to take out a loan at this point in time, right? So that's not one route that we would look to take if it isn't feasible. It's basically going out for... to find other lending capitals. At this point, given the current situation in our government, the finances of Guam Housing, we're looking to maximize our assets. We're working... our housing team is working on renovating, refurbishing, all right? We will be able to get five units online, I believe, by the end of the month or middle of April for rental. We're looking to renovate and rebuild a Port... Asutis, it's an apartment complex in Jigo. And because of funding issues, we're looking to work with DPW, potentially Gura, to get assistance from there prior to us going out and seeking money elsewhere. We plan to get this building up to rental livable standards and generate income from there. Now, with regard to liquidity, Guam Housing isn't very liquid. We've actually been operating in the red for the last five years. However, still able to provide the programs, the funding for the programs for our first-time homeowners. We're not very liquid. How do I plan to do that? Is first, I need to focus on getting us back into the black. Getting us back into the black financially and then work on finding more liquid assets for us.
Thank you very much, Alice. Some of my colleagues in the 34th Legislature, actually, our Women's Caucus met very regularly with the previous president. And I want to thank him certainly for his service and for helping us to kind of move the ball forward in terms of working around supporting and trying to provide additional resources for our homeless population. So I just want to thank you in advance for the work that you're going to be doing with us on that score. And just to close out, in many cases, GHC is considered the lender of last resort for many families who need a second chance or a hand up. And given the massive rise in construction costs in recent months and years, is there a need to increase the statutory ceiling on eligible homes for GHC programs?
Yes. We just had that conversation the other day that the current... given the current weighted average, I believe, what we're looking at is our clientele, which is usually like the... so you have your low-income, they have subsidies, and then you have your high-income, and they have the funds to do it. So we're looking at the middle class, our high-low-to-mid-class individuals. And given the current situations with the cost of homes going up, they've lost buying power. So it's going to be very difficult. So yes, there would be additional funding needed.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
I hope I addressed your questions.
Thank you.
Thank you, Senator Lee. Senator Muir.
Hoffadee, good morning, Alice.
Hoffadee, good morning, Senator.
So I just want to say that when I first saw your name for the appointment, I was surprised, but the surprise didn't last very long because I thought maybe our Maga Haga chose the right person for this position. It didn't take me very long to realize that because we've met several years ago through a mutual acquaintance, which, by the way, you have fans watching you all over the world right now for your support. And they're all messaging me, "Please support Alice." And I remember when we first met, I was driving a car, and you were giving me the direction. And I'm sure you remember this. Rather than telling me to go straight, you kept telling me to go forward. And I found that very humorous, but if we fast-forward to today, it really defines who you are, you know? It's like, that's how you... one foot in front of the other, we're always moving forward. And it's kind of ironic that even the chairman for the board even put that in his testimony in your support about moving forward. And so I've adopted that politically correct statement now, rather than saying, "Going straight, I'm always going forward." And even you said that in your own testimony about, you know, paying it forward and moving forward. And so, excuse me, rather than giving you advice or... I'm sure you've already thought of everything that you would like to do with the Guam Housing Corporation, and I just want to let you know that you have my full support.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Senator.
Senator Teller.
Thank you, Madam. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Oops, I said, "Madam." Sorry. There's so many of us here. And also, that leads me into saying, "Congratulations for being the first woman president of the Guam Housing." Congratulations.
Thank you.
That's a big feat. You know, I just wanted to say, you know, I'm sitting here smiling ear to ear because I've known you for many years. In fact, you're an inspiration to me when I first got into politics in 2006. And I looked up to you for advice and leadership too for me. Every time I would see you, I'd ask you things. So I definitely know you're very experienced in government affairs. And I know that you're going to do a great job. And I really have total confidence in you, both on a business perspective, which definitely me, this agency, needs, somebody with a business mind. But morally and ethically, I truly believe that you're going to do the right thing. And I greatly appreciate you moving forward and continuing your career in the government of Guam. are there opportunities for the Guam Housing Corp for grants? Grant opportunities?
I'm sorry, how do you mean? We have the FTHAP Grant Program, the First-Time Homeowners Assistance Program.
Any other types of grant that you can look after or seek?
Yes, we can. So we'll be researching. I have a team researching, doing research online with the federal government. Now, we're very cautious with that. Right now, Guam Housing, you can refer... view it as locally-owned, providing locally-needed programs, right? So once we get involved, and you would know this, you know this best, is we get involved with the feds, and we take money from the feds, there's always handcuffs or constraints from the federal government. So we're very cautious with that. But that does not deter us from looking at programs that may be offered for grants that could be administered through Guam Housing. Working with Gura. Gura has a loan program. I've spoken to the executive director there, Mr. Tapasha, and I said, "Let us have your loan programs. Let us manage that," because that's what we're set up to do, is manage loans. So yes, we are looking into other programs. And definitely, as soon as... one of the biggest things that we're going to be doing is reaching out. We're going to do a whole lot of outreach with the community and get the word out there.
Because I do know, as long as I've been in government, the Guam Housing has... always has difficulty in trying to generate revenue to sustain yourself. And so, there's a... there may be opportunities there, and I hope you look into that. But I'm sure you already have your plan set up, so...
We definitely will be, but I am open to... if there's... I know, contrary to popular belief, I don't know everything. So I am open. I'm open to suggestions. I'm open to dialogue, to find the best solution possible, to ensure that Guam Housing stays open, that its doors stay open so that we continue to provide these very important and needed... these programs that are needed for our community. So I'm open to suggestions, please. My door is always open. My door is always open. Come down to your office if you have any ideas. Do that.
Alice, and that is the reason why, your statement is why I'm giving you my 100% support. Thank you so much.
Gosh, thank you. Thank you.
Senator Tala.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you all for your testimonies this morning. I appreciate the testimony from the Guam Election Commission members and, and director. And that's a good, good start and testament to your ability to work with these boards and diverse opinions. And I also appreciate the testimony from the Guam Housing Board. I think that's very important, that they've seen you since January, working and, and what the potential they believe is, will be, will be coming to Guam Housing because of your efforts and the efforts of the staff, and I thank the staff for being here as well. I wanted to just clarify a couple of things, and I appreciate your testimony where it really states your assessment of the agency, its financial position, and it's not sounding great at this moment, but I also appreciate your, your recommendations, I guess, for how to move it forward. So let me just start with this, the transition report made a very distinct recommendation that Guam Housing should merge with GURA. Now, I've heard you say you're going to work with GURA, and, but I appreciate that Guam Housing and GURA have very separate components, separate missions, and they're funded very differently. And I, I agree with you, concerns about having a local entity, even though it's receiving federal funds. I mean, just different, different ways that GURA operates versus Guam Housing. So, because I didn't see that in your plan, I guess, I'm, can, is it correct to guess that you're not going to pursue an absolute merger, that you're going to continue to work together with GURA and, and finesse what Guam Housing can finesse, that GURA is trying to, to implement, and vice versa, whereas GURA can assist in maybe helping you, you know, with your, your program? I know that in the past, they've worked very well together, in particular for veterans' housing and, and this homeless issues that we are trying to address. I appreciate Guam Housing's efforts in the past to, to help the government of Guam address that when no one else in the government would or could. And so, I guess just talk a little bit about this relationship with GURA, and, and then I want to talk to you about the homeless.
Thank you, Senator. So the transition report, as we all know, came as a result of an external team, right? A team coming in and talking to the employees of Guam Housing. So the administration now has an internal team, and from the inside, we're seeing things a little differently from the team that put together the external. Not to say that there is anything wrong with that report. I have spoken to the executive director, I think is his title, Mr. Tapashna, and merging, and we've discussed, first Guam Housing and GURA have two very different missions, two very different mandates. We're funded very differently. We are revenue generating, right, and to provide programs for our, our local community. They are, I believe, 100% federally funded. If a merger is to take place, that's going to require a whole lot of discussion. Quite honestly, I'm concerned just about, about the federal constraints that may occur should GURA assume Guam Housing and our ability to be able to provide programs. There'll be a whole lot of federal mandates that may prevent us from proceeding with programs for our local community. So with regard to that, that's still in the air, that's still being discussed. However, Mr. Tapashna and I have a great working relationship, and we have a great, we have a good understanding of where our agencies are, and we will work together, right, to find the best solution. As our team from Guam Housing have heard me say it many, many times, is we're looking for excellence, and we're always looking for win-win solutions. And that's what Ray and I will work towards, I'm sorry, Mr. Tapashna and I will work towards. I, I hope that addresses the question on.
Yes, thank you.
Okay.
And about, about the homelessness, homelessness, I just want to make sure that, I'm sure that Guam Housing does not operate without consensus of the board. And so when, in one of the items, you said, "Previous leadership requested GHC to address the homeless issue even at the expense of using its operating funds." And then talks about the totals and how that, it was from loss, loss of rental income, utility expenses, and cleanup expenses as well. But I, I kind of remember this, and I'm, I'm, this was at the consensus of the board, is that correct?
I believe that came as a directive from the front office, right, working with the president at the time.
Okay, so maybe explain that to me. So how much of Guam Housing operations are going to be directed by, not by the board?
Well, there are certain.
Particularly, what, what happened here? Expenditure of money?
Okay, so I don't, I can't speak to what may or may not have occurred previously. My understanding and the history that I got was, this was somewhat of a directive from the front office to house, I believe there are people from Mancaut and then from the previous storms and then just homeless people, just put them in a home somewhere. We all know how some of these things go. You're appointed by the administration, sometimes it doesn't go to the board. I don't know what, what occurred there. I can't speak to that. What I am finding is that it cost us in loss, loss rental. So these, we would put homeless in homes, and we don't get rent from that, we can't rent it out, all right? That's one. They use the utilities, water, power, all right? They don't pay for that. We absorb the cost for that, all right? So the amount that's stated here is, is all of that. Plus, when homeless move out, when we're able to find them homes elsewhere, or we're able to get them to rent, right, we have to clean up. Guam Housing has to clean up, has to rebuild if damage has been done to the, the home that they were at, right? So that's, that's where these amounts are, and that's, that's how things happen, really, from.
All right, well, I just wanted to, to say from my vantage point where, when it was explained to us how the government of Guam is responding to homelessness, and that Guam Housing has assisted in that regard, I was very glad for that. I think they should continue as much as possible. And I know that it doesn't bring you income to do that, but I think where it's necessary, it's necessary. And, you know, maybe you can adopt policies like you have for your veterans homeless programs and the, and the other programs that you have that, that really are unique in Guam and really unique in our government, whereas there, there are no other places available. So, I don't know, I'm looking forward to your recommendation on that, that not, not really a policy to reject those types of, of efforts on behalf of the government.
Oh, gosh, Senator, I apologize. No, we're not looking to reject homelessness. And please be aware that there are certain functions that are left to the, to the, to the president and her, and the team, right? But my working relationship with the board, be assured that I go to them whenever there's an issue or concern that needs to be addressed. I'm very well aware of that. We are not going to reject the homeless. We will do our part to address the homeless situation. One of the ways that could potentially do that is, once we get our units online, or we're able to build more units, to build more homes, and we have consistent funding, maybe through the, the Housing Trust Fund, right, that we would be able to use these, the, the funds from that to pay for the rental, to pay for utilities. But yes, we will work with, we will work with the government, of course, on the homeless situation.
All right, then finally, this consistent funding, and is that the same as the lending capital and all of this? What are your ideas of where that might come from? The, the, the previous legislation that was to increase fees on land transactions?
Yeah, yeah.
And is that the primary source?
Fees, and then of course, we lost interest income. We get income from our interest. So given the current interest rates out in the market, that's a challenge for us right now. So maybe increasing interest rates. So it's a really delicate situation, because if we increase interest rates, we won't be able to increase.
Not competitive, yes. So is that a board decision?
That would be a board decision, yes, yes.
All right. If there's any other recommendations that, we're, we're here to assist you, so please, I'm open to that, yeah. I agree that Guam Housing has really served a very, very important mission over all these years in the government of Guam for, and I, I think that homeowner assistance program, the First Time Homeowners is also a very good program, so I'm hoping that we can continue that. I understand the, the up and downs of the funding.
Yes, yes.
So, yes, any recommendations, we're, we're here to help you in that. And thank you again to the board members who are consistently dealing with these issues and very, and making, I think, very good progress. I think the recommendations from the staff and the board in the last term that I served here at the legislature were excellent, so I want to commend them for that and congratulate you on your appointment and hope that you continue this good work, and I'm, I'm looking forward to it. Sidoos Masi.
Thank you, Senator.
Thank you, Senator Tala. Senator Moylan.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I also want to thank Senator Talahe. I don't have to ask my questions because he read from the transition report also. So basically, all they had to say is congratulations, you got a great team behind you. I'm sure you're anxious to get back to work, they know what you want to do, you got your priorities going for you, so welcome aboard, I'm looking forward to working with you. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator.
Ms. Tyrone, you know, that's great. We got, we had seven senators up here, and that's seven votes, that's, that's, you're in the right track. But you know, Alice, in reference to GURA, I do oversee both, you and GURA, I'm not looking forward to any merging. You have your own, you have your own mission, continuing that mission. I did speak to Mr. Tapashna about the veterans and the homeless. Well, maybe I'll just schedule a meeting with you folks and their folks, and we come to an agreement on how they need to help you, because they got all the federal money, they should be able to help you. And then the discussion about any legislation that we need to address. You know, I've always opened my doors to you, and I've asked you already, whatever you need, you let me know, and let's put it to the tape, put it to paper, and let's present it, and let me convince the committee, and we'll get it a vote, all right?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
On that, I do look forward to voting yes on your confirmation, and is, I believe there's no one else here that would like to testify on your behalf. There being none, this committee will conclude the public hearing on your, on your nomination. Ms. Senator Tala, did you have another question?
Can I just ask, are, are you, do you intend to continue to serve on the Guam Election Commission?
That is my intention, however, that would be the decision of the Democrat Party. The, the party.
The Democrat, okay.
I'm party-appointed, yes.
All right, thank you.
Yes.
That's why I said, now you find a host, a house for the election commission and Guam Housing. Get out of the rental, get the government to start paying that rent to you.
We are on it, Mr. Chair, thank you, yes.
Okay. There being no one else to testify today, the committee will conclude the public hearing on your appointment, Ms. Tyrone. The committee will continue to receive testimonies today, because I would hope to get this on the floor, vote this week. Please address your testimony to the committee on education, correction on, to this committee at Senator, via email, senatorjoSAnaukstein@gmail.com. Sidoos Masi, for your attendance, Ms. Tyrone, and for the folks, the gentlemen, the gentleman, woo, take that out.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Senators.
We will now proceed to bill number 11-35 LS, introduced by Senator Jim Moylan, an act to create and expect more act 2019 by adding section 3133 to chapter three, title five, Guam Code Anted, related to the creation of the agency's customer service policy. We'll give it about five minutes, and then we'll start, all right? Thank you.[1425.88]
Item, item A, lines 28 to 26. How, how, who? Who are these people going to be that will, would make sure that this program runs? And who, who are you going to designate? Is this a mandatory designation of, of these people? Are, to establish rules, regulations to, to manage this program? It is quite cumbersome to, to have, for example, a supervisor or anybody in this, in that organization set up rules and regulation and mandate and, and have a team to look at this every, every single day. It is, it is very difficult. How are you going to make sure that the policies that those folks set up in their organization, how are you going to ensure that those policies are being followed every single day? Can't do that. It's, it's very difficult. When I was Director of AHRD, there was the biggest thing that I had to deal with, customer service. And, but there are ways that we, we, we attempt to fix it and it worked. I think, number one, that you've got to have a mandatory first-line supervisor training. Mandatory. You, I don't know if you can mandate that from here, or the agency director mandated. I mandated in my unit. I brought instructors into my unit. I instructed them as far as customer service. And my customer service just went out the door. It, it was so good later on. And how did I know that? I ensured that every customer I asked, we ensured that we asked every customer to fill out a customer service survey before they leave. So, if we allow our folks to be trained, our first-line supervisors to be trained, if we ask our customers to fill out a customer survey before they leave, and what is so important is how would the supervisor rate the employees? Like you said, you, you mentioned like you wanted the employees or employees should be punished if they are not conducting customer service like they should. Is there a standard that's going to be set? This is so important, just to have these things set up. What you got in here is, really has no teeth. You've got to have some kind of standard that that supervisor sets up. If there's no standard, how can a supervisor rate the employee of what is being done right or what's being done wrong? This is what I'm talking about as far as no teeth. You, you can't do that. It's very impossible. So, one of the techniques that we used, or at least I used, when I was in the military and to make sure it's in the regulation as well, is to ensure that in the performance report, in the performance report, that there is a, is a, is a mandatory comment portion there as far as customer service is concerned. You have your standard that's set up by the supervisor, you rate your, your employee with a standard, and then ensure that it is commented in the performance report. Otherwise, we're not going to get anywhere as far as this is concerned. I support your, 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 uh, your, your idea. This is so good to ensure there are people, but it really has no teeth. And lastly, I think, and that is just micromanagement. We have the administration's responsibility to run all the agencies. To mandate how they run their agencies in this human service area is, I believe, is micromanaging. Governor Carville attempted to do this when he was governor, but there was no, we, we didn't see any, um, um, any output, any result from his mandate from his people. So, he went by the, he went by the wayside. So, I support it. Look at it carefully as far as putting teeth into the, into this program. And at the end of the day, it, it's difficult. So, how do you, how do you gauge customer service in government of Guam? How do you, how do you gauge that? Perhaps, perhaps one of the things that we've set up when I was in the military, in my unit at least, is to have a, an online survey, an online customer survey by, and anybody that this survey goes to me and the commander every day. And then we look at these things. We don't want any, we don't want any names in the survey whatsoever. We don't want to know where it's at. We just want to know what's the problem. So, you, so perhaps an online survey that goes to you, or maybe the governor, or somebody in order to gauge customer service. More than likely, people want to come to, to us and tell us that there's a problem. But if there's a way for them to, to honestly send in their, their, their comments, perhaps that's the way to gauge customer service. And from that point on, perhaps you can set up strategies on how to improve customer service in government. So, I applaud you for doing something to, to correct it, to fix it. And customer service is really not that bad in some areas. I mean, rev and tax, believe me, I'm, you know, I go in there, I get scared because there's so many people there. But those guys are professional. I go up there, there's, it feels so good. I go in there, sometime I go in there for 10, 15 minutes, and boom, I'm out of there. So, that's all I have. Congratulations, and I, I can't, I can't stay too long. I have to go to a funeral, but if you have any questions for me, I'll take it right now. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Ma, Major Kirigwa?
Good afternoon, Chair. Senator Moyle and Senator Trelawney. Munia Barnes and Senator Taiton. I'm here on behalf of the direction, by direction of the Acting Chief of Police, Stephen C. Ignacio, to deliver testimony on Bill 11-35. Buenos dias, Hafedee. I am submitting this written testimony in regard to Bill 11-35, an act to create the Expect More Act of 2019 by adding subsection 3133 to Chapter 3, Title V, Guam Code Annotated, relative to the creation of an agency customer service policy. The Guam Police Department's Enabling Legislation, Public Law 24-23, effective May 14, 1997, establishes our mission in Chapter 77, Title 10 Guam Code Annotated, subsection 77103, Powers and Duties of the Department. A. The department is charged with the enforcement of all criminal laws. Each police officer is authorized to protect life and property, enforce the law, prevent crime, preserve the peace, arrest violators pursuant to Title 8 Guam Code Annotated, serve the public, conduct searches and seizures of property pursuant to Title 8 Guam Code Annotated, and perform duties as of a, of a peace officer. B. The department is authorized to cooperate with any federal, state, national, or international law enforcement agency, including any law enforcement entity of any possession of the United States, where a reciprocal, reciprocal agreement exists in detecting crime, apprehending criminal offenders, and preserving law and order. And C. The Guam Police Department shall have jurisdiction within the territory of Guam over all lands, whether titled to the government or not, including submerged lands, all waterways, whether navigable or not, and over all airspace above such land and waterways with respect to which the territory has jurisdiction that includes all lands. This mission is outlined in GPD reports published every year, such as the Executive Budget Request, Citizen Centric Report, Uniform Crime Report, and Compact Impact Report, to name a few. Our mission identifies a customer base that includes Guam's entire population, both residents and visitors, with a jurisdiction over all lands, all waterways, and airspace over such lands within the territory. Pursuant to this enabling act, GPD renewed department rules and regulations rescinding a GPD policy manual that was already in place since 1990. General Order 99-01, effective May 12, 1999, establishes a policy that is centered on the conduct of all GPD personnel and their interactions with the public. Both of these fundamental policies, which have been in place for almost three decades, includes a law enforcement code of ethics and 54 other sections that define and gives guidance on personnel conduct, such as violation of rules, unbecoming conduct, neglect of duty, unsatisfactory performance, insubordination, abuse of position, citizen complaints, courtesy and respect, personal appearance, truthfulness, treatment of persons in custody, use of force, general conduct, to name a few. This policy commits GPD personnel to a high standard of customer service and requires that any violations established through due process receive appropriate disciplinary action. In December 2016, the Guam Police Department committed to developing and implementing a strategic plan that would provide a map for commanders and staff, staff officers to better define our goals and objectives, to meet our mission statement, identify action officers responsible for the timely completion of objectives, and the measurement of performance by reporting out in quarterly action implement, implementation plan meetings. The first two-year strategic plan was implemented in January 2017 for fiscal years 2017 and 2018. GPD is currently implementing a second-year strategic plan for, a two-year strategic plan for fiscal years 2019 and 2020 through General Order 18-03, effective October 31st of 2018. There are six overall goals with a total of 110 action items GPD is responsible for implementing in the next two years. The six goals are: strategic goal number one, engaging our community through the delivery of a superior level of police service with transparency, community outreach, accountability, and compliance with the highest professional standards. Strategic goal number two is to achieve organizational excellence and provide a superior service. Strategic goal number three, increase community and business partnerships to enhance the capabilities of the department and foster positive relationships. Strategic goal number four, standardize processes and policies to synchronize the performance and uniformity of the force to ensure equal application to the public. Strategic goal number five, enhance agency interaction and outreach. And strategic goal number six, enhance operations which would increase uniform and civilian capacity and training capabilities. GPD's success with two consecutive two-year strategic plans is seen in a robust community-oriented policing strategy with neighborhood watch programs established in many of the 19 municipalities on Guam. Increased outreach programs with the business community and public school system, active collaboration with other government and non-government organizations to address public safety concerns with, with at-risk populations, task force operations that currently address violent crime and dangerous drug interdiction, a capacity forensics, for forensics that is sought after by other law enforcement agencies in our region, efficient administrative processes that have significantly decreased overall overtime expenditures and leverage federal grant funding to support updated technology, and many other measures that can be referenced in our current plan. GPD's policy specific to administrative services provided by the Records and Identification Section is captured in a standard operating procedure, Unit Directive, RIDS 15-01, established on January 29, 2015, and rescinding a 2013 policy. This policy identifies the scope of operations needed to serve between 40,000 to 50,000 public service transactions per fiscal year. This is a high average of 190 service transactions per day. Civilian support personnel are currently led by a police sergeant, with four of the 12 personnel addressing these transactions on a daily basis from the General Records and Public Service Unit. The remaining personnel are assigned to the Report Receiving and Maintenance Use Unit, averaging 350 transactions per day, and the Idifications Records Unit, averaging 60 transactions per day. In mid-2014, GPD's administrative services, specific to the issuance of concealed firearms licensing, were adjusted to conform with Public Law 32-150, directly related, related to the Castle doctrine laws passed that same year. In the following two years, Public Law 33-134 and 33, I forget the, the, -169, required adjustments to GPD policy that addressed changes in citizenship and residency and firearms handling, respectively. Compliance to these changes in the law come with the appropriate workshop for personnel to ensure proper application and to maintain a high standard of public service delivery. The application of current technology is seen in the updated conversion of GPD's law enforcement records management system that went live on June 18, 2018, which includes case management, computer-aided dispatch, firearms permitting, firearms registrations, personnel management, evidence and property management, and training management. GPD is working towards a national incident-based reporting system certification with the FBI, pursuant to their goal of standardizing neighbors for all jurisdictions in the nation by 2021. Additionally, GPD announced in 2015 the, the availability of service requests via email at records@gpd.guam.gov. GPD maintains a social media policy with the establishment of Unit Directive PC 17-45, effective December 15, 2017, and personnel conduct using social media references existing GPD policy standards. More importantly is that this GPD policy recognizes the benefit of social media significance with increasing public safety awareness. The Office of the Chief of Police manages a public information officer who serves as the primary communications conduit for the public. Therefore, the Guam Police Department will support a law that acknowledges completeness of our current, current policies and procedures, GPD's capacity to meet our mission in compliance with existing laws and administrative rules, and the existing customer care expectation of our personnel. Thank you for allowing us the opportunity to submit our views, and we respectfully request the recommendation mentioned here with be considered and included in Bill 11-35.
Major, Major Kirigwa?
Thank you.
Real short question, maybe a confirmation. Based on your testimony from the chief, basically you guys are already doing this, so you're good to go, and you're just basically saying you want to put it on record that you are up to par, you're, you're, you fulfill the requirements of better government's customer service. Am I correct?
Yes, you are correct. We are, we feel that we are complete with respect to policy and standards and holding our employees accountable for, uh, conduct, both, uh, good conduct and, and bad conduct, of course, inappropriate conduct.
As the chief, make sure he puts, uh, drinking water when they're in line, the long lines, and records. I just thought I'd throw that in. But Senator, Senator Kelly Morris, Taiton, please, your comment, ma'am.
Hafedee, Sisus Massey for coming down here. I think this is good that we're going over this issue. I think it's very important to our community to feel like we are there to support, uh, good customer service, this quality relations between our employees and the public at large. And it's also a very important part of the process to be able to hear public testimony such as yours, and Public Health had also provided, uh, public testimony and other testimony. It's exactly part of the process that needs to occur and what we need to hear. And so, um, mine are really more just comments of bringing out some of what I feel are the strengths of the points that you've made and others have made to recommend for this bill. So, um, there was a suggestion in the Public Health testimony for the Department of Administration to lead this. Things like public service and customer service, these are highly specialized areas, and as you have outlined so well, you have had experts really weigh in on this. You have had that expertise help guide what you have in place. And so, I, I agree with the Public Health's Director that DOA would make a lot of sense to put something into place that would be government-wide, government-wide, it would therefore be standardized, but they could also be working with those that are highly expert in this area so that it is not people who are not familiar with this field, developing it like agency by agency. Where they could start would be assessing, assessing those agencies that are already complete, as you mentioned here, but also where there is need. And then they could be the ones to lead the way with developing the standards, holding the training, having the appropriate amount of time to develop, to be very thoughtful. It takes a while to put these in place. So, as the Guam Police Department has developed over time, you have modified along the way to get to where you are now. And I think that time consideration is very important. That was something that was addressed towards the bill, that more time needs to be had to be able to develop this in a, a quality way. With the understanding of discipline, as you noted, for the Guam Police Department, that is again already very much in place, discipline and responses for both positive actions and, and actions that go against the policy. So, the Public Health brought up that it may be contrary to some of the, um, agency mandates or discipline policies. So, again, having a single entity spearhead that could be very important in helping understand what goes against government policies, government-wide, and then maybe look at it in a tailored fashion per, per agency. I would ask for, from the author, that the discipline policy perhaps might not be part of the public display, but again, that's not my area of expertise. Having experts weigh in on that, I think, would be the important thing. And then also, if it's housed within DOA or like entity, they could handle the annual review and then continue offering that training to all. So, I'd also like to add, and I know, I believe, I believe that it's in place for the Guam Police Department already as well, that there's cultural sensitivity training that, and procedures that you, you go through. And so, I think that could be an important part of a bill such as this, is we are a very diverse community. We are a community in which we are in a homeland and have an indigenous community. So, I think cultural sensitivity would be good to add in as one of the standards. But, again, thank you so much for your testimony, for providing that very detailed account. It's important for us to hear. Sisus Massey.
Thank you.
Senator Munia. Ma'am, do you have anything? No question. Senator Trelawney.
Thank you. Thank you for your testimony. I also wanted to thank Mr. Kundav for his testimony earlier and his recommendations that, uh, very concretely in a performance report, we, we mandate that a comment or part of the performance report address customer service of that employee and his other suggestions of how do we gauge customer service in the government of Guam, including cus, online customer surveys and, and different things. But I also want to commend the author for the intent of this bill. Improving customer service has, I think, always been one of the goals of, of every legislature. We want to improve the executive branches' customer service. Hopefully, we're also trying to address our own, right? Look to ourselves. I'm, I'm thank you, thankful for the Police Department's assessment of its own and inclusion of all of these in their, in their state plans, and those are excellent and very good work.
Thank you.
Uh, I also wanted to point out that there's a, there's a public law that was implement, passed in the last legislature, Public Law 34-05, that, that mandated that standard operating procedures of every Guam agency be put online so that the public could view it and comment on it and do whatever, but, but really it would be a, a way for the government to say, oh, they are already admitting it's going to take this many days to do something, and we, we think that should be shorter. And I think showing those operating procedures really helps the public to improve the operating procedures. And the, the law, Public Law 34-05, also mandated that these standard operating procedures would be audited periodically by the Office of Public Accountability. So, I know this is a brand-new law, but I just think a lot of it, perhaps we're going to find that it, that they really do have very good policies in place, written, that they should be implementing. And now it's a matter of us reviewing those policies, such as the Police Department has laid out in front of us today, reviewing those for every agency and making sure that they're actually doing that. I, I think if we've seen the directors, that that's one thing that they must have had to do in order to, to follow through with discipline, and, uh, that if they didn't know what the standard was, how are they going to enforce it in their agencies? So, hopefully those are there and, and, but I, but I agree that if, if they are there, that they could be reviewed as to these items that have been listed in this bill, such as, to ensure, every agency should look at whether their current policies include a policy related to communication on social media, policy related, related to how do they plan to improve efficiency through technology and all the various items listed. So, thank you very much, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Senator. Senator Moyle.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you. Thank you for your presentation. GPD sounds, it's terrific what you put together. Actually, you'd be a great, probably a great teacher if we ever had these classes to go, to happen if it gets this far. The concerns that you brought up, I'm, I'm glad that was addressed, Mr. Kundav, as well. We also have written testimony, too. So, I do appreciate your insight and providing that information to us so we can develop this more and take it back and hopefully bring it to the session floor and, and make things happen for all, all departments. And it's, the whole goal is just to really help with customer, customer service. So, thank you so much. Uh, Mr. Chair, I also just like to, just put out a little points from the written testimony from the Department of Public Health and Social Services, from our Director Linda DeNorsy. And she brought out some good intentions also in, in support of the bill, but she's also, or the department is also looking at having Department of Administration design and implement and evaluate and refine government-wide customer service initiatives. So, I, I think that's a good issue to consider. And that DOA should mandate and incorporate this into autonomous and semi-autonomous agencies as the overall department to oversee that. So, I'd like to acknowledge this report and that it was very helpful, as well as the oral testimonies provided today. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Senator Moyle. And, and you know, Senator Moyle, as I, as I reviewed Linda DeNorsy's testimony, and thank you, Major Kirigwa, you're great. I, I'm very familiar how the Police Department runs. You guys have a lot of customer service. We just run into some bad customers, but I know customer service is, is, is something that every police officer wakes up every morning and is hoping to always say, "Good morning", to whoever they pull over, maybe for speeding or whatever. But I know for a fact, in the years I was in the Police Department, we could wake up with a happy thought, and somebody out there would just want to destroy it. But I know the police officers are strong, they have the integrity, and their commitment to protecting life and property, regardless of people's attitude, you know? And I, and I've, I've always, always appreciated that with the police officer, even when I get pulled over, they says, "Sir, can I see your driver's license?" "Sure, why not?" And they says, "Thank you, sir." They always say, "Thank you." Give you a ticket, say, "Thank you. Drive carefully." The people want me to acknowledge that, that when, when a police officer pulls you over, the police officers prefer not to pull you over if you're doing what you're supposed to do. The police officer prefers not to go to people's home to break up fights if they just remind themselves that they need to conduct themselves orderly, and so forth. And you know, if everybody would just make an honest effort to comply with the law, you won't have to worry about customer service program with the Police Department, because they'll just wave at you and keep going. You know, a great day, their, their life's always in jeopardy. But going back to, uh, Public Health, uh, written testimony, I have some problems with it, um, and I'll be speaking with you, because she mentioned things like the agency doesn't have time for it. I don't, I don't believe that. As a director for every agency, you always have time, you have a public You have a public information officer. The police department is able to do that. They've got so many precincts. They're just as busy as everybody else. And customer service should be one of their focus because I know Linda always says, good morning, how are you doing? So she can actually ask every, every division in her department to do the same thing, writing a simple policy. And yes, DOA should be the one to correct, to create this policy. They're the headline agencies, and I'll be working with the author of the bill. And we'll see how far we can get with this. There being no other testimony, the committee has concluded. And the committee will continue to receive testimony. Please address written testimony to the committee on government, government, general government operations, appropriation and housing, and submit it via email, senator joe s. anoxin@gmail.com. Sisus Maasi for your attendance and participation in today's hearing. And for those at home, thank you for watching. It is now 10:50. Good day.